In kira vayin all unakirangin
Katharudaya parisutha namathukke mahimim undavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Inge, selavakutthatthangalum unde, selakandipugalum unde, selayerakkangalum unde
Here are certain promises, certain chastisement and certain mercies
Anniya putturar un madilgalai kattuvargal, avudai rajaakal unai seveeparkal
And the sons of strangers shall build up thy walls and their king shall minister unto thee
Analam, yen kadungoobathinaal naan unai adithukudain
For in my wrath I smote thee
Yeun kira vayin all unakirangin
But in my fever have had mercy on thee
Katharudaya parisutha namathukke mahimim undavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Inge, kadungoobathinaal naan unai adithenindru kathar cholukara
The Lord says, here for in my wrath I smote thee
Kathar adithadaaga, indhadathale vedam sutti kaattukara
The word of God says out here that the Lord has smited
Indru ya message, kathar yen adikiraa
Today's messages, why is the Lord smiting us?
Thagappan yen adikiraa
Why is the Father smiting us?
Sarva vallemulla devan yen manidhanai ilavatal thanudaya pilligalai adikiraa
Why is the Almighty God chastising or smiting his people?
Adipadhi enbadhi thagappanudaya oru kandipin adayalam
Beating shows the correction of a father
Ah, inneka anegar thangalai devan adithadaaga, kayivittadaaga, purakkannithadaaga, devanai enai thurattiivittadaaga, ipriyallama anegar cholukara, arikkigalai naam keetkalam
We see that many of them are confessing these days saying that the Lord has beat and the Lord has chastened and the Lord has forsaken and so on
Chela karigangalile naam padikeppadukuram, adhanudaya karanam namukuthiriya velai
We have been affected in certain things, the reason for this is not known to us
Chela nastangalai naam sandikkuram, adhanudaya unmai namukuthiriya velai
We are facing certain losses and we do not know the reality of it
Yein yein enkara keldvigaal namukulai elumbikundae irukara
Such questions as why and why is rising up in us?
Inneka gollakathalakuda thagappanmaar ilavatal mattavgal palare kandipade, adipade naam paarakalam
We can see the only fathers also chastening and beating their children today
Kayikalal adipade paarakalam
We can see them beating with hands
Kallai vaita adipade paarakalam
We can see them beating them with rods
Vaartainal adipade paarakalam
We can see them beating them with words
Abelai kaayin adite kontruvittaan
We can see Abel killing Cain by beating
Ah, oru egyptian, oru ebruayenai aditukondrindan
An Egyptian killed another
Aditukondrindan
He was beating a Hebrew like that
Ebruayenai aditukondrindan
Hebrew was beating another Hebrew
Esu porchevaralal adikeppattar
Jesus was beaten by the soldiers
Apostle Paul adikeppattar
Apostle Paul was beaten
Thagappanala adikeppaduthira pilligalundee
There are children who are beaten by parents
Sagodharanala adikeppaduthira sagodharanulundee
There are brethren who are beaten by their brothers
Ah, pilligalai adikirra pettoregalundee
There are parents who are beating the children
Pettoregalai adikirra pilligalundee
There are children who are beating their parents
Manavi adikekudiya purushargalundee
There are husbands who beat their wives
Purushargalai adikirra manavikalundee
And there are wives who beat their husbands
Ipriyave naam solikundae oru history maridolidhe pola
Like this, we can keep on telling a history about them
Anamila anegar adi vanginavarkal, oru sellela adi koduthavarkal
Many of us have been beaten and many of us have given beating
Ipriyogollakaparakaramaga palavidamana adigalai naam vangiirkuram, anubhuthirirkuram, mattavgalai naam punishpannirirkuram
Like this, we have got the beatings in the worldly manner and also have beaten many times and also punished the others
Naan inneka manidhangal adipade koduthu naan ungalodu pesavirumbavilai
Today, I do not want to speak to you about smiting people
Kathar yen adikiraa
Why is the Lord smiting us?
Kathar adikiralavu namudiyavalkai seerugulayindu poivuttada
Is our life gone to such an extent that the Lord is beating us?
Chela karigangalai namal purindugulla mudiyavellai
Certain things we are not able to understand
Yein adikiraa
Why is he smiting?
Edarkava indha punishment
Why is this punishment?
Adai namukuthiriyaadu, naamaa idinala irukumo, adhanala irukumo, indru naamey oru modiva edutukundu, idinala than nam mele ipriyaiyutthanindru naam nenithu, adaimaathrona sadipaditikundae poguram, anal karanam puriyamal vilikiram
Not knowing the reason for this, we also assume that certain things might have been the cause for it and therefore we do not know as to what the reason is and go on
Namila anegar devanala adipattavarkal
Many of us have been beaten by God
Adu thavaraala
It's not wrong
Thagappan yaare neesikiraro, avanai sitchikiraa
Whomever the Father loves them, he will chasten
Thagappan sitchiada putturan unda
Is there a child who is not chastened by the Father?
Appudi oru thagappan thanudaya pilligalai sitchiada, pilli, sitchiavittal, andha pilligal, vesipilligal indru vedam cholukara
If a child is not being chastened by the Father, they are the children of the bastards, is the word of God
Chela edangalile namukhu adita karanam puriyamal sabithuvudukuram
Some places we do not know the reason why he's smiting us and we stumble
Chela edangalile aanthavari naam keldvikaikuram, yein aditthier
In some places, we ask a question to God as to why he beat us
Adipadhi keldvigaalum undu namukulai elumbivudukara
Such questions are arising in us too
Ah, Eremiyaavale naam paarukumbrudhe
Reading in Sharamayah
Ah, padinala madigaram
Chapter sixteen
Pattnupada vasanathinaam paarukumbrudhe
Verse nineteen In bellanum, in kottayum, nerukuppadigirana
Eremiya padinala pattnupada
Sharamiya fourteen nineteen Yudhaavimuttilum vilthiero, seyoonumudiyasumavukku arusigamaicho, naangal arokeyamareyakudada badi, engli yen adite, samadhanathukka kathirundom, oru nanneyum illai, aro
Inge, inge avarul cholukara vaarteen, ningal padithu paranga
Look at the words that he is telling out here
Avakakaaga, engalai yen adite
They are asking a question, why has those smitten us?
Naan mundi uliyaseedhadathale oru pathu pannirundu vaisupayanavang thagappan oru thavara singjana adichthaa
In the place where I was ministering before, there a father meet a boy who was ten to twelve years
Ah, avang abavakattukara, erukadichyaan kattukara
And he asked his father, why you beat me?
Adhalani kakaadhan cholirukara
He said, you need not ask such questions
Madhala adichthukka karana cholle
You tell firstly the reason why you beat me
Kadishile oru karana chonnara
Finally, he told the reason
Adaiyanda ni cholirukalala, naan sadipadithirupalla
That you could have told me and I would have set myself right?
Niye, ni adicha
Why should you beat me?
Ni madhul cholle, naan kilkadilena, adiparag adina
You first tell and if I don't obey, you beat me
Ipola pillaludaya prasangangal namu vitthiasamaa karkam
These days, the preaching of the children are so different
Aramakhalangalile kaka karigala ningal kettirupinga, nari karigalan kettirupinga, ipola kaka, vitthiasamaana kaka, nipu pudusa karigal cholaaranshtanga
In the beginning days, you would have heard of the stories of foxes and crows, but these days, the story is different
Mundiyavundu kaka nallarkin cholinaari, paadupadachona, kaka vadayavittutupadu, ipa adhiyala, kaalavachikutupadu
Before, in the days before, they used to say the story as, the fox, when it's asking the crow to sing a song, then it will keep the, it will put down its
Mundiyavudhe, mundiyavudhe narigal kudithu pathu, indhapalam pulikun cholitthi, karekalanthu poirichya, anal ipola narigal apriyala, kambathondi apriyekodiya kaila yarakirudhin cholip, ibupanacholikudukara
Before, the foxes used to climb, climb up and it's not able to take the berries, it's saying that it is very sour and it will go off, but these days, it is just planting the stick and it is getting fruit
Yein aditthier indru naam keetkuram
Why, why are you beating? This is what is
Yein adikeppadigira valkai, valluguna enbadhi naam keetpadilai
We are not asking the question as to why live, we live a life to be smited
Devan adikiralavula namudiyavalkai sarangurayindu pogurade enbadhi koduthu, kavaliyattavulakherundu, yein adikiraa indru naam avarmel visanappadukuram, adinala nam odingipoga arambikiram
We are careless as to while living a life as, why he is beating us, we are not knowing the cause for it, but asking him why he should smite us and we are going away
Hosea vinpostakam aramadigaram, madhala vasanathai paarukumbrudhe
The book of Hosea, chapter six, verse one
Anghe, avarich cholukara
There he says
Avare namai adithaar
He has smitten us
Avare namudiyakaayangalai kattuvar
And he will bind us up
Avar namai adikiraa, avare namudiyakaayangalai kattukarar, karanam naam avarathil thirumbavendum enbadhi avaridinookam
He is smiting us and he will bind us up, the reason for this is he wants us to turn back to him
Ah, inneka devanudaya adipin nookathai ningal purindugulla vedam
You should understand the purpose for why the Lord is beating you today
Innakunjanerangalichu naam ketta solirupinga, adipattavanga, ellarame kayivaitirupinga
After some time, if I should ask you as to who is beaten, all of you will lift your hands
Chela thagappanmaar thanudaya pilligalai adikiradee kadayaa
Some fathers are not smiting their children at all
Avang ambadhalavalekadukka tryipantrangala, thavara, ajjila vallake avang tryipantradala
They wanting to bend them at fifty and not at five
Ah, appudi alla priyamanaavale
Beloved, it's not so
Ah, kathar vandu oru time koduthukide erupar
The Lord will give time, certain time
Ah, sariyana nairathle, kathar andha sitchiye thodangukara
At the right time, he begins his chastening
Ungadipilligalai kodan ningal kandithu, adithu vararpuduthu thavaru illai
It's not wrong for you to correct and beat your children, grow them up
Anal andhandan nairathle, andhanda punishment, andha sitchiye, ningal koduthu, andha thavara unarthi, adu sadipaduthavendidi, oru pettoregalde kadamai
But at the right time to give them punishment, to smite them and to correct them is the task of the parent
Oruvala ningal anbulavulakherukalam, paasam nirendavulakhalam, ottek oraye pilliyavavungalakherukala, adhanala ningal kaatukalidhi pola vararpuduvada mudiyaaadu
Maybe you are totally loving and you have your only one begotten child, but you should not grow them as the ones, as the wild bees
Thanudiyoraye varana kumaran, andhavragi esukrisuva, pidha siluvain pathile kondu bodudu namakellarukum thiriyum, adukooda oru vidathil adipadakudiyora anubavam
We all know that the Father sent us on to begotten sons through the path of Calvary to be beaten, that is the path of being beaten by God
Porchevargal adithalam, ivathan kangelai marathavudinalan ivegalallam nadandadu
Although the soldiers did beat him because he did put off his eyes from him, that is why this happened
Adithal enbadhi oru pilliyae seerupaduthadalu indru artam
Beating means, it is correcting one's child's child
Adukaage chela vandu yappamun twenty-four hours adichitthierupanga
For that, some of them keep beating for twenty-four hours too
Manavi adichitthierupanga
Some of them keep beating their wives
Manavi adikiravunkal raabojanakadayaa
And to those who are beating their wives, they have come in
Purushanay editha adikiru, kayivongaravunkal raabojanakadayaa
And to the ones who are touching out their hands to beat their husbands, they
Ivegalallan ningal gavannathile, ningal vaitukundu, ungalde sindhil, epadu vada, ungalode oraththale, sindhin oraththale irundukundae iruk
Keeping this in your mind, it should be found and raised in your mind
Ezekiel yelamadigaram unbadha vasanathai paarukumbrudhe
Ezekiel, chapter seven, verse nine
Yeun kanna unai thappavidaadu
My eyes will not suffer you to go
Unvaligalukuthakkaade unmail naan varaappanavain
That which is coming according to your ways will I bring it upon you
Appudhu adikiravavragi naan katharindre, niyariindukolvai
Then shall he know that either Lord has smited
Indhalindhi enna velenge kodukuram
What do we understand from this?
Aandhavudaya kangel, tamudiyapilligal mele nookamavayirukara
The eyes of the Lord are always upon his people
Aduknairadiyavandu unai adichchinnorukunanaala, obur vidangalile unai narathukara
For that, not to come directly and smite you and break you, but he is leading a different path
Oru sellela kuru vaarthi chonnalpotho, andha vaarthiye avan adichchinnoriki, avanaseerupadithi kodukara
Some of them, if he answers one word that is sufficient, that word will break him and correct him like that
Oru sellela kuru parvay potho, appidthirimi oru trip paththa potho, avan valkai sariyaidho
Some of them, if you should turn back and look one glance, that life is resetted
Avan adikevenda
He need not be beaten at all
Avan thurathavenda
He need not be chastened
Avan sitchikivavenda
He need not be chastened
Andha oru parvay, appudi oru palakathu ningal ungal pilligal konduvaraga
You should bring that practice of one fight to your children
Andhavragi esukrisu, andha visaranile, ka, ukkandhakana padinindukundrindhar
Jesus Christ was standing in the place of inquiry
Ah, pilathukumunbaga visaranile indukundukara
He was standing before Pilate for inquiry
Inge, Pedro, avare marudalithukundae varukara
Here Peter was denying him
Avan mundaavisee marudalithuvattan
And he denied the third time
Mundaavudhe marudalithoodanee, seeval kuviutthadi
And the third time, once he denies the cockcrew
Seeval kuvinoodanee, unkiyavutthalavandrichi, nama thappu pannidhaavain
When the cockcrew, he came to his mind that he was doing something wrong
Oodanee avarapakara
Then immediately he looked down to him
Avar yarkanave, avanatham pathuthirukara
He was already looking at him only
Look, ay, iruvati irandha madigaram
Look, chapter twenty-two
Aruvadu aruvatiyora vasanangalai naam paarukumbrudhe
Verse sixty and sixty-one
Aruvadu aruvatiyona, aruvatrindu vasin
Sixty, sixty-one and sixty-two Adarka Pedro, manushanay nee sulkiradaereenindran, avan ipparisonnavudane seeval kuviichu, appudhu kathar thirumbi, Pedrovay noke paththar
Avar onnume chathampadala, yesale, adapavi ipri pannitthi ellasolle, appudhu esu thirumbi, Pedrovay noke paththar
He did not shout at Peter nor did accuse him for what he has done, that time, Jesus looked at Peter
Paathin
Seeval kuviikiratharkumunni, neenene mundaavudhe marudalipayindre, kathar thannedathil sonnavasanathai, udanee Pedrovay ninivikundu, veliyepoy managasundhaladha
Andha oray parvay
That one sight
Ningal ungal pilligal appidthirimi paththapotho, andha pilligal, thavakappanukoravama idhavachinchitha, ungalakupadikala, oodanee avaniseno, sadipaduthana, andha alavu daavungalad, ningal practice kodukun
If you should just turn back and give a glance to your children, your children should understand that they have done something wrong and rectify themselves, to that extent, you should give practice to your children
Chela nairangalile katharnamai adipadhu, tandipadhalakala, seeripaduthathan
Sometimes, the Lord is beating us not to punish us but to correct us
Adu nam sadipaditikundal, sariyadhu
If we should correct our sins, it will be right
Aandhavudaya adiile, thappiponna manidhanai kadayaa
There's nobody who's escaped the beating of the Lord
Avan raja, avan sadhanaal, avan uliyakana, avan asarian, avan thirkadaris, ipriyallam pakarala, thavarnana achiruar
He's not seeing that he's a king, an ordinary person, a prophet or a high priest and so on, he will never look to these people, but if he's wrong, he will beat him
Ponnee, adikya, adikya, adu pasumonai maarustadu
As the gold has been beaten, it is becoming pure gold
Adu potho, ni sitchikapada, sitchikapada, ungalke varingalam mahimai ai maarukara, ni uruakappadukara
Like this, to the extent you are being chastened, your future will become glorious and you are formed
Anal oru sellela adichcha, adichcha bakara, chela pilligal, ningal pettoregutthu maadu adichamari adikara, ana, adu, hmm, onnu mandalayarala thurundavamariyala
But some of them, he is beating and seeing as the parents are beating the oxen, they are beating their children, but it's not turning away
Avan aandhavudan cholukara, naan adichcha, adichcha pathan, oru sellela adichthukallam virudavaa poirichya
But the Lord says, I have been smiting my people and some of them, for my smiting, it's not
Eremiya rendhamadigaram, uppa dam vasanathai paarukumbrudhe
Sharamiya, chapter two, verse thirty
Eremiya irandhumuppa
Naan ungal pilligalai adithadu virudha
Naan un pilligalai adithadala, virudavaai poivuttadu
I have smitten your children in vain
Oru sellela pilligalapadikirukaga, adi, adina adipanga, anggapadikirukka, angkapacity moolela, andha hormone orpala
Some of them will be their children that they educate them, but it is that the sense is not working in them at all
Adapodu, ivanga, addi, addi, addina adipanga, onnume aradu
They will keep on beating their children, but it will never get into their head
Ah, chela vandhi ningal potthirukkuthirukkuthirukkun thirukkunala, adu oru speeddham boho, adukmala bohadu, ena andha vandhiyada kapacity avada
Some vehicles, as much as you turn, it will never go faster than that because its capacity is so much
Ah, priyamanaavale, namudiyavalkaila, nam evadu adipatturukuram
Dear beloved, how many times have you been smitten in our life?
Chela pettoregalalam bayangarama kandichidhanudaya pilligal, remba kattupattala vararkara
Some parents are bringing up their children in a chastisement way
Oru sellela, vaidyalam military maridha aruke
In some houses, it will be found as military
Bayanga, military maridha narathavanga
They will leave their children in a military way
Vidhalal pilligalindu, thappi vandha oru payan pressinam
One of the boys who escaped and came from the terrorist, he was telling like this
Avam peesithukumbrudhe, zolna, oru bullet, naanga kuribatha adigilena, oodanee oru punishment, yana bullet vestpanithens
If they do not target the bullet and beat it properly, then there is a punishment because they waste the bullet
Andha, oru bullet, naanga vandu karakta useppanla, avinna vestpantana, ni vestpanta, oodanee, ena ungalapudichu veliyakundu vandu, aramuttham manthikittalavachit, odhu, tolavachit, odhu, oru ground sutti thormak, settebeduvaadukul
He said that if we waste one bullet, then immediately we are given punishment, they will take half the sack of the mud and they will ask us to carry it and run and come if we die
Sambalangadayadu
Without salary
Ah, naattukagaasagara
They are dying for the country
Adilakooda, ni vestpantana, unakupunishment
Even in that, if you waste, you are punished
Olakathalipidipatta palapunishment durukumbrudhe, katharunkuda, thanudiyapilligal, thanudiyavulai maarumudiyaga, chela nairangalile, namayum aditheseerupaduthukara
When there are such punishments in the world, even the Lord, that we, his children, should be rectified of our ways, he is correcting us
Namayiduvarika adichthukara, uruakiru, uruakirukrama, illa adheyamari, adichthadu virudangaramari, abde tolallam, adaripotthi, abdi poidhadeerukrama
He's smitten us so many times, have we been correcting ourselves, have been formed or in vain, has he smitten us, just piping off and walking?
Chela amma maripoy chalavanga, yo, yanda, ipri adipadurandhal, ta, yo, evadu adivangitena, ala, naanakonnavalekala, adi ma
Some mothers will say to the children, why are you beaten like this, why are you getting beaten from him, he will say, it's not painful
Ivan adithadu, ivan adithadu, virudha
It's in mind that he's smiting, smiting him
Oru sellela, enna adichalum, hmm, konjunguda asayadu, adu janmaswava remba stronga aruke
Some of them, as much as they are smitten, they will never change at all because they are original characters like that
Eremiya mupatiyona, padinata paarukumbrudhe
Sharamiya thirty-one eighteen
Naan paniyada maadu bol adikeppadain
I have been beaten as the oxen which will never obey
Indha nohkathukalakondurumbo, andha maadu varadu
When the bullet is coming into the york, it will never come
Adi, addichcha, 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 kodundu, andha nohkathu puutva
It will keep, they will keep beating the bullet and they will bring it to the york
Adukparak, kadayisala, adu paninchu, andha nohkathu thukunavani, ulavundro
Finally, it will obey and come into the york
Anal chela maadugal varave varadu, enada, adu vera trackla valandadu
But some bullets will now come into it because it's grown up in a different
Adu vera mari valandadu, adavachin, namipidi kandukondu kattupattala kondurumudiyadu
It's grown in different manner, you cannot control them in this manner
Ah, inneka kuda sabai kulai, ipri palavidamana, vera mari trackla ulavangala, indha trackla kondurumudhu, avangalindha trackla pohomudiyala
Like this, the people in the church, who are gone in a different track, if they are wanting to be brought in this track, they cannot
Oru tharindu pudum maadu vangirindana
One person brought to mokshin
Avan thanudiyavivasayathulila kadekardalang konduva, marketle konduvaivika kudiavan
And he used to go and sell that which is getting out of his farming in the market
Ah, andha pudum maadu, andha rendu maadhi, vandhi lappuithi
He tied up these two oxen in his cart
Alaga, ellapurli, etik kodundu, main roadla vandicha
And he took off all his things and came to the main road
Avar, ipam poi, neera pohunno, avada
He has to go for a long distance, I thought
Main roadla vandachi, niyavadu, abdi poidhade, rinchna, oru sellela mani nairangal kalichcha, andha uru vanduro, market vanduro
If that oxen should go the straight way, then that place will come and the market will come
Andha main pathile kondundu vutthata
He brought them to the main road and he left them
Ah, kunjanera, adu odiide, ponan
And for some time, he kept driving them
Kanna asandavattan
And he was fast asleep
Thirinum mulichu paththa
Suddenly, he woke
Adu poikundae irundadu
It kept going
Avdi thungida
It just slept
Thirumbakai nairam poitundisi
Again, it went on
Kunjanasandhata
And he was sleeping again
Thirumbam mulicha
Again, he woke
Adu poidhade rinchni
It just kept on going
Tharidha, idapoiitraga, ncholitthi, ivanu oru limit vandu, thirinum mulichtha
Then he thought that that oxen is keeping on going, after some time, he woke
Ivan nairathle, idha enga vandurukano
Until now, why should it have come?
Aandha kurikappadha urukumunala vandurukun
It should have come to the place appointed
Avivalaara, aachin cholitthi, remba theliwa endichci, enga vandurukan, paththa
Now, very clearly, he got up and saw where it has come
Yappo first avay asandana, andha dathala, namadu poikitrinchni
That oxen was going in the place where he first slept
Avan remba theliwa ukkandhakathu, enna nadakadu, yein, idhu thodangnathle, neenu poikitraga, paththa, adu anghe, shuddiide
When he is seeing us too, why it's not gone and it's in the place where he started, it's just revolving there itself
Thirumbatha, avanki yavutthalavandichci, idhu chakkuvadnamadu, idhu vangitthavundro, idhu engala odhu, idhu main roadla pohala, anghe, main roadla round adichthi, rinchni, ivan mulichu pathkumbrudhe, vandhi pothada, right, thooka, thirimimulichu pathkumbrudhe, vandhi pothada, vandhi engala pothada, idhu chakkumadu
Finally, he came to understand that the oxen that he has got is only to plow and it will not go straight onto the road
Namun, namu, enga chakkumadha, irunno, enga kondundu vachirukara, anal, inge, epri irukurun, thiriyala
Even we were like oxen which would plow, the Lord has kept us in this place, we do not know as to how we are
Naanov paniyada maadu bol adikeppadain
I was beaten as the bullet, it is not accustomed to the york
Eremiya mupathunupadinatla, neeranay tandithir, naanov paniyave illai
Sharamiya thirty-one eighteen, it is said that you have chastened me, but I do not come into your chastening
Karanakhalangalile, katharuduthundu, ethanavisay, nam tandipavangirupo
In the last days before, how many times we have been chastised because
Nallal oru spiritual avikuriyamanidhan, oru chinnasambavu nadandavadane, karana ungal thiriyam
A good spiritual man of God, when small incident occurs to him, he will know the reason for it
Oodanee thiriyam, idinala, idinadandadu
He will know the reason as to why this thing has
Abadi karana thirliya, kathartha ukkandhakela, kathavaya, ipri anumudikapattadu
If you do not know the reason, you search and ask of the Lord as to why, as admitted in your life
Oru pervekkurudan, esunutthalakondu vandu, ivan saidapaavama, ivan pettoro saidapaavamaan, kushin bana
One man born blind was brought to Jesus and he was perceiving as to whether it is a sin of his parents or his son
Yeedu, esu adukku badichonnara
Jesus replied to that
Iwan saidapaavamala, ivan pettoro saidapaavamala, devanudaya kriyegal, ivanukul velipadumudhu, ipri nadandadu
It's not the sin of him or his parents, but that the works of God might demand that this thing happen
Appudi, annal chela karigangal, devanudaya kriyegal kaaga, kathar, perappalrune, chela karigangal, ipri anumudithukondupogura
They first are telling things the Lord is admitting from the birth, it says that his name might be Magnific
Katharudaya parisutha namathukke mahimim undavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Enan inneka message adukumbrudhe, yein, kathar adikiraa, inneka message, kaalayal konduva koduthava, adi, merandu piro kodadu, naan yositha
When I was taking the message, I thought as to why the Lord is giving me this message, the people should not be
Analam aviyanavada, evudal, inneka message akavai irukara
But the inspiration of the spirit is this message
Oruvala ningal adikeppadukalam, ilavatal, adipadhamal, sapuudukke, varumun kakkaraduka, inneka message ungalakko kodukapadala
Maybe you have been chastised or the Lord is cautioning you beforehand for the things to come
Kathar adikiradukku, onbu dukaarnangal, naan ungalakcholukara
I would like to say about nine reasons for the Lord to chastise
Ah, devan anbulavara
The Lord is loving
Yarakkamulavara
He is merciful
Mana urukkamulavara
He is full of compassion
Needyapurumayulavara
He is long suffering
Aairam thalayamuray muttum kira vayakakara
For thousands of years, he is preserving mercy
Anal, indha devan yein adikiraa
But why is this Lord beating?
Idhu, purajadigalutthala kodu oru sellela keldvi
This is a question among the Gentiles too
The people in DMK are speaking this question often. DK are speaking like this. These are the people having the policy that there is no God. They will often put on this team. The Lord who said not to murder, he smote Uzziah and he died, can he kill him like this? If the wages of sinners did, then hell is bonus. That is true, I say. If wages of sinners did, then hell is bonus. But why did he smite him? They do not know the reason for my reason. He who gave the commandment not to kill, as to whose hands did he give? He gave the law into the hands of one who once murdered a person. The Lord gave this commandment, do not murder into the hands of Moses who once beat the Egyptian and smote him. And that is giving the key into the hands of a thief. The college will remember chat up on them, they will later take it, after that they will come to a country where they cannot do that. There are certain reasons, uh, the fact the Lord is chastising his people, we cannot tell they are Gentiles like this. The chastising of the Lord is not to kill a person, but the chastisement cannot be borne by a man. There is a difference between the ant biting and the serpent pricking. The accent of a cycle is different from that of the lorry and the Lord's chastising is different because it's so great that he is the Almighty God by his nostrils itself, he is having a great punishment. Verse seven and eight. Here, a man of God is stretching out his hand and the Lord is beating him and he is dying. Here, Uzzah, a man of God, he is kindling the wrath of God. When it's coming to ministry, you should not speak judgment. In this case of the servants of God, you cannot speak anything to charge. If a servant of God is raising up but he is falling, he is responsible to his master. Here, the ark of God is taken up on an oxen. In Tamil, it is said, the first which is wrong, crooked, was crooked forever. You should not take the ark of God on an oxen. He brought it in a bullock cart. He brought it on a bullock cart and he was playing with the drums. When the drums are being played, the oxen will not stand. In some of our processions, they will play the drum and the oxen also will come along with it. The noise of the drum will confuse the oxen and will come into our position. This is what happened in verse six, verse five. The oxen were very angered and they were shook. When the people were playing on harps and on timbrels, they were dancing and coming, these oxen were frightened and they shook it and Uzzah went and coughed up pretending he was beaten. The ark of God, the service of God and the servants of God are like the current. If you touch it without insulation, you will be thrown over. He ran and caught the ark. Firstly, taking up the ark of God upon a bullock cart. Secondly. He was not sanctified. Thirdly. And he touched the ark of God in his terrorism. The three reasons for this is quite clear here. If a child of God is not living according to the law, you touch the current whether it is a pastor, brother or sister or any one who is practiced with it, it will throw over. If the Lord is merciful, you will escape. If the Lord is not merciful, you cannot do anything. One brother in Chennai, he was such. He was cutting the wood and the wood of it went and fell into the main line of the place. He was on the tree. And that piece went and fell in the main line. And the whole of the tree was full of current. In one second, his life was gone. But what happened was? The Lord by his mercy made the transformer to fly. The transformer for so many kilometers beyond, it was tripped. And finally, he escaped. And today also, if you see that the knife caught hold of his hands. And they came from E B. How did he escape? Did he attend this first suicide? For these reasons, this cannot happen to at all. And the mercy of the Lord granted him. This ark of God is a powerful of God. The servant of God is, is the ministry is want, should be given caution too. We have to trust the ark of God, there needs the sanctification for it. There are two, three children in that house. But only one was sanctified for that purpose. First Samuel chapter seven, verse one. The ark of God was found in the house of Abinadab. And they sanctified Eliezer in order to keep the ark of the Lord. When we read in second Samuel chapter six. Verse three. And Uzzah and Ahio, the sons of Abinadab, drew the new cart. Here, they put away aside Eliezer. Uzzah, Ahio, and the other two children, they took it and they threw it away. When Eliezer was appointed to keep the ark of the Lord, they put him aside and they brought in Uzzah and Ahio when you are interfering in the ministry. First thing, you have to carry the ark of God. You're keeping the ministry somewhere else, you should not just. When it is ministry, you should shoulder it. If you should shoulder whatever, they should play on the drums or harps, you can just shoulder it. Secondly, he did not sanctify himself. Thirdly, because he was treacherous enough, the Lord beat him. We should bear it. First Chronicles. Chapter fifteen. The reason for them to be beaten is they did not bear the ark of God. Because he did not bear it, neither made his law to be declared amongst us, the Lord dismited us. You should bear the ministry. Don't keep the ministry in somebody else's. The ministry which you have to do, you do it. When the dog has been called. When he called the dog, it will just wag its tail. If you are going to command to the dog, it is commanding tail. If you are calling the dog, it will just wag its tail like this, you should not put away the ministry which is given to you on somebody else's, if you do so, you will be beaten. Secondly, with the sanctification, you should not touch the ark of God. Even if the ark of God should fall or raise. First sanctification, if you do any other ministry, that will be the cause of evil deed. Thirdly, voluntarily or you should not do anything. He of his own, he touched the ark of God. And that ended up his life. This is the same incident which happened in Saul. In first Samuel thirteen twelve, he is saying that he forced himself to offer the burnt offering lest the people should leave him and go. The reason for anointing you is that you should not be doing the ministry with a sanctification. You not doing your ministry, putting upon the head of others. In certain things, because the Lord is delaying, you are forcing yourself and interfering in this business. That is what the reason for Uzzah being beaten that day and die. Can we go and explain this to the person? Dear child of God, you have been beaten in the past days in some angles. Or you ignorantly would have intercired on some other matter. In your foolishness, you would have given the ministry to somebody else's hands and gone away. Doing the ministry is a great blessedness. If you should give a glass of water, the Lord gives the water. If you utter one word of gospel, the Lord, that is the water. If you pray for two minutes, there is an answer to your prayer. The Lord will give you reward to your ministry. But putting your ministry upon somebody else's head is wrong. The ministry which you have to bear, you should bear. At the time you are not able to bear it, you ask of the Lord. Secondly. Second Chronicles twenty six, verse six. Firstly, Uzzah was beaten. In the house of Abinadab, the ark of God was there for twenty years. Although it was there for twenty years, he did not sanctify himself. Although you are there for twenty years, could not you sanctify yourself? What does this show? He was there in that house for twenty years. For twenty years, this ark of God was found in the house of Abinadab. But only three months, this is found the house. In that three months, he, his household and now all his children were blessed. But twenty years, Dua was found in the house of Abinadab, his children did not sanctify themselves. You can read this in first Samuel chapter seven, verse two. The ark of God was in Kiriya tree room for twenty years and all the days it was found there.
Here, a king is being beaten. And the Lord will punish him. All are children before the Lord. And the Lord will punish him. And the Lord will punish him. In the sight of God, there is no differentiation of a king and the other person. Here, the reason for this person to be beaten is... His mind is wrong. Because of his pride of mind. And his transgression. Wherever he is, his mind is wrong. Here, two things are pointed out. 26:14. When you read in 26:14. He was strong, he lifted up in his heart, and he transgressed against the law. Here, two things are pointed out here. One is wrong, and one is wrong. First thing is the pride, or the second thing is... Wrong is the son of Eve. Eve was subjected to... But that is why she was deceived. And the Lord has commanded not to eat a fruit. That is wrong. To transgress, it is sin. What is the word of God? To transgress, it is sin. The main fault of his thing is his pride. The first sign of falling is pride. The first sign of falling is pride. Before falling comes pride. If a child of God is going to fall down, when he is proud enough, you can find out that he is going to fall. If a child of God is going to fall down, when he is proud enough, you can find out that he is going to fall. When a fruit is being ripened, then it will fall off after... If a fruit is being ripened, then it will fall off after... If a fruit is being ripened, then it will fall off after... Similarly, a servant of God or a believer, if this pride is coming into him, then you can understand that it is going to fall. He is a believer, and he is a believer. As much as he was humble and when he was weak, he held on to the law. When he was strong. Now his heart was full of pride. Pride is a spirit against God. The Lord is resisting the pride. When our pride comes into you or me, that day we are going to be beaten and... You should not give room for pride. You should not give room for pride. In any situation, you should not give room for pride, you humble yourselves and just go on. We will praise you. The others will exalt and speak of you. We will praise you. The praise which is coming to man is temptation to him. If one is going to exalt and speak of you, then he is taking a pit. Any father will always be praising his child. At one time, he will put him down and he falls. Like this, if pride comes into you, at one time, you will fall. In Isaiah 14:14, Lucifer, the son of the morning, is said that you have been cast off from the heavens. Please do not give room for pride. If anybody is praising you, you just say, "Praise the Lord," and stand by without... If somebody is exalting you, you should not flout like that. You are a dry tree, and the Lord will keep using of you, and if you have pride, then he will put you down. You might shine bright, but if the fuse is plucked out, gone. It is a small... If you should take that fuse and go, then you cannot be burning forever. Why are you beaten in your life? Why are you being cast out in your life? It is because you are forcing. You are not doing the ministry in the way you have to do. You did not sanctify yourselves all these years. If you have sanctified yourselves in the time the Lord had given to you, you would have escaped. Secondly, your pride. And if you give room to pride, we will fall. Before the Lord smote him. He did not die in this... He became a leper, and this is my thing. Just think and see how it will be. See, what a desperate situation he was cast into. He is standing. As he was standing, he was smitten. I was in a ministry in one place. A good young boy who was supportive for me. He was fair. He was very... He will pray well. He will give a hand in the ministry. And his sister was in ministry. He was good. Already, the servant of God there was speaking strong about the wedding. See, for some of them, and that church will never get married. They are still people like that. They are still people like that. There are people not without wedding, not coming to ministry, they are at home, they are working, and they are just living like that. Even in that group, she went. He also found that group. He was too good. And he recently got work. As days went by, he began to stumble. And he brought many of them into this truth. And he brought another young person along with him. This is ministry. These are the servants of God. And this was what he stated. He will tell all these to everyone. And telling to a Hindu brother, he brought him in. But when he is now ruling over the church. I told, but they are not people as when I told. They said that this is the ministry, they are not doing the ministry like that. Now are not servants of God as in the days before. Now it's not the church like that. Now he began to say such a statement recently. And recently. He was sitting at the doorstep of a shop. And he is repeating these same words to that new friend. And that was the shop of a believer. He stands, sitting at the doorstep and speaking. This is the right church, this is the church of the bridegroom, this will be cast up in his coming, this is the one lakshat for thousand, you who said like this, how can you traverse now? When Paul is writing... I changed it. I changed it. If I should tell another preaching for what I have told before, I should be cursed, it says. Even if another angel should come and give another preaching, he is cursed. 1 Corinthians 1:8. But though we own angels from heaven, preach any other gospel unto you than that which we have preached unto you, let him be accursed. Even if I should repeat it, it's wrong. There is nobody having authority over it. If I myself tell the preaching which I have preached is wrong, then it is a curse. What happened? Even if he says it, he is saying it. When he was standing at the doorstep and he was speaking like this, he said, "How can you also say that you..." This is wrong. Well, he was telling that the servants of God are not right, and the ministry is not right, and when he was just blaming like this, his hands and legs were paralyzed. Immediately, he asked us to what it is. And immediately, he was speaking in a faltering way. And that boy came. He asked them to put in his house, and they dropped him in his house. See, how it would be found? He is a young boy, he has lost his job, everything is lost, it is just like that. You cannot preach any other gospel because you have preached this gospel, and that is a beating of my thing. You have no authority neither, I have authority. If the angel from heaven speaks any other gospel, he is also cursed. It is gospel is one. When you say, "This is the church, this is the ministry, if you should tell against it, then you are accursed." See, if the Lord should beat you or smite you, what will happen? The Lord will give us some talent. The Lord will give us grace. The Lord will give us... And he will give us talent. Not to exalt ourselves, but to exalt the name of the Lord. When he is giving us something, if we should proud enough, the Lord will put us out. Hey girl was a pilgrim. She was a slave. She had no life at all. But by grace through Sarah, she got alive. When she got this life, she despised her mates. The Lord chased her like that, and she began to wander in the village. You humble yourself, and I will grant you mercy, and she humbled and she got... When pride comes, he will not say as to who it is, he will be beaten. The Lord turned him as a leper. He died a life without love or anybody. What a desperate situation it was. Because the Lord smited him, he ran away. Because the Lord had smitten him with leprosy, he was in a house alone as a leper. Until his death. Until Uzziah should die, the Lord did not have mercy on him. And the glory of God did not... Only when he died, there was a revival in the church. Only when the people who are proud enough go to the church, the church will be right. And the pride of God. Pride of beauty. Pride of money. Pride of seniority. If any of you should boast about saying that you have such and such a thing, then you are the great pride people, and the glory of God will not enter into the church. Yes, I have heard in a book, when Uzziah was dead, and the children were sleeping, and the children were sleeping. In the prophetical book of Isaiah, chapter 6, verse 1, we see that when Uzziah died, the Lord descended from his throne. And you break the power of pride. Only your pride is destroying your family. It's the "I," the pride is shattering your family. Leave the term "I" because neither he who used the term as "I," he next moment became a beast. Psalm 39:10. And David says that by thy smiting, I became faint. Psalm 39:10. David was a king, but he was beaten by God. Because of this, he says that he was... One of the reasons for the sickness is the beating of the Lord. This is the time when we have to rectify our lives. And verse 86 says, "Deliver me from all my transgressions." Transgressions is a great hindrance. Verse 11. Thou art correcting and consuming the people you have transgressed. And you are making his beauty consume away like a monk. It is the iniquity and the transgression which is making us to be beaten, and getting the beating, we become faint. Some of them are spiritually fainted. Why? Because of the... David, who was concerned by the blow of the Lord, said, "Lord, you take away this blows, and because I am becoming faint." If you should take the wrong to smite people, whether it is David, or Uzzah, or Uzziah, all of them have the same beatings. David is much pleased with God. Because he loved me, chastened him. And he said, "Not one trip, but because of many blows, he is becoming faint." In my house, my mother will correct more. My father has no practice of chastening at all. He will never bother. We will keep roaming, we can go anywhere and come. My mother is full of correction. She is full of love, but if she beats, and I am not beaten at all. I was the last. So I am not, I have got less beating. But one day, I did something wrong. That was a great mistake. It was that day that I was firstly beaten by my father. One beating, I just fled away from five, seven, eight steps, and from that I went. The time from near Srivegundam from Velu, they used to make the wrecks, and they used to bring that to Koran. And police will spot them out easily and catch them. The old type dressing, and they are walking in style, they will easily catch them and take them. But if they put off the things which they bring unto the buses, they will go to their places. And in order to carry them, I used to go. And they will give me something. All of them were relative. One day, as I was going, I went to the house that they were making this... That was not to my father. In the days of which education, if he should go like this, then his education will be spoilt, taking this, I had a rod in my house, and he took that rod readily. I made ready for something else, it came back to me. As I entered my house, I was beaten, one beating, and just jumped up and went because something is wrong. Like this, they will be beaten by the parents, you will only... Considering how good the Lord is chastising us. David was beaten many times. He will do something wrong, get beatings, and again he will go catch hold of him. I often used to think... Some of us will never ask for forgiveness. That is the greatest important character of Satan. One Satan spoke to me. You are doing everything wrong, you are not asking for forgiveness, he is forgiving you. Only us, he didn't forgive. I asked him, "Did you ask for forgiveness?" Did you ask for forgiveness? You'd never asked. Did the fallen angel ask for forgiveness? Did Adam who fell ask for forgiveness? Did Miriam ask for forgiveness? Did you ask who showed him ask for forgiveness? Ask important persons, he has never asked for forgiveness. Even our believers, who are very important, he will never see them asking for forgiveness, he will even leave the communion and go... David, I beg you, beg you. You should not give room for pride. David, always being beaten, he said that thy grace is good, and it's good that I am chastened because I learned thy love through it. Acts 18. Verse 23. Here he wrote, "Was beaten and he died." Herod was an all-power person. He was the most important person of the clan. And sometimes, he will take the word and speak. Herod was sitting upon the throne, and he preached to the people. It was a good message. At the end of 5, the people said, "This is not the voice of God, but not of man." And he did not give the glory to God. Man, I already said that man will praise you, but you should glorify the God. I am not high. It's a grace. What can I do? I can't do anything. It's God's work. Like this, you should give all the glory to God. If you give the glory to God, then you will... Because he did not give the glory to God, the Lord did beat him, and he died there. Yeah, beloved, we have been chosen that we might glorify God. Even at the church, you keep praising God. In your workplaces, you praise God. At any place, there should always be praising in your mouth. If anyone should come and glorify you, then you should say, "Not I, but Christ." I read of an incident. When a boy's father died. And he was the only son, his mother. And his mother educated with a very difficult way. Maybe you also might be educated like that. Oh, you might have read it. And would have heard of it. Finally, with hardships, the mother made her child to educate. But the son understood the difficulties, and he studied. Finally, he was a gold medalist of the university. And he was given appreciation the day. Now he has to go. And the mother got labored and got the dress for him. The mother had a desire that she wanted to see that son the same with gold medal. But how can she go? She was thin. She was nothing. If I should go stand like this, then those who have to honor my son will never honor him also. So she said, "Do not." After I get income, you can see that. But this boy. He said, "If only if you come, I will go." She said, "If I should come, it will be not worth it because those who are honoring will not honor you." And she said, "You go because the rich people and honorable people will come there, you will be honored, you said." And he said, "This is an important incident in my life, you should definitely come." And putting on the best garment that she had, this mother also went. And he made her sit in one place. And he went into the... As he entered, they were clapping him, and he got a good invitation there. And everything was over. And he got the gold medal. Now, he bowed down, and he said, and was given some time to speak. When the time was given to him. He said, "One moment," and he got down. All of them were looking at him. He went straight to his mother. He gave the gold medal to his mother. And came back empty. All of them were looking at him. All of them were looking at him. All of you were seeing that I don't have a gold medal, but my mother is the reason for this gold medal. If she had left me for a job in my small age, I wouldn't have come to this section. And if she had left me not correcting... Or if she had educated me or something. With all the reasons, she alone. Will be select this. Looking at her father and mother, we asked her not to come to school. You will come there and say something, "Don't come." Some of them calling somebody who is going on the road, saying, "Father and mother, they get the certificate and go." This is what is happening on the earth. Herod was a great person, but if he did not glorify the Lord, this judgment... He did not glorify the Lord. You should give that which the Lord does to the Lord. Whether it is... Whether it is... Or its glory. Whatever it is, you should pay to the Lord, that's the honor to the Lord. Some of them will shiver from head to foot if they have to testify, if he has to speak on the road, he will speak. But when he comes here, it's stage fear. So when you do something wrong, you don't have the stage fear. Or when you are doing something evil, then there is no stage fear. If a five-odd year is going to testify every week only, then you can say that the Lord has done you good, and you can glorify the Lord, you are only testifying once a year, or once in two years, and so on. If you should get a beating that you might give the testimony. I have testified many places. In all the places, I would have told me this. In Chennai, central jail, I have testified. And beach have testified. But there was a pastor who practiced me to testify. He was Pastor Casey Vargis. He will never encourage any person. He will only put them down. I was testifying in one place. And seeing that as I was testifying, people were crying. The people were crying, saying as to how he was misled in such a path, and after my testimony, when I sat down, he is asking me as to what testimony you have given. All of them were recording and CDs. I am going to sit down. What a test, sit down. Okay, next, we will talk. With the great revival, that testimony was over, and when I sat down, he said, "What testimony you said," and he asked to sing the song. It was in their intention that I should not be proud over the testimony also. Then I thought he will leave me with this. He will never raise me again. In the next place convention, firstly, he raised up just for testifying. Then I thought I will escape at least today, in half if they detail properly. In song or testimony or preaching, they should not be prided at all, that was the intention of the saint of God. They were so cautious about it. We do whenever we are exhausted, if we do not give the glory to God, then there is a smiting we will not know. We should not, we need not go and steal, or have a theft, or sterilize, or do any connotation, but if we do not give the glory to God, that's sufficient. 2 Samuel. 12. 15. Why are children beaten? Why are the children beaten? What is the reason for this? When we read in 2 Samuel, chapter 12. 15. What is the reason for the children to be struck? Elderly people, they did not give glory to God. And they are transgressing against God. And we have pride. And we are forcing. Voluntarily, we are doing something. These are right reasons. But why are children being smitten sometimes? The child went up to the point of death and died. What wrong did that child do?
What wrong did that child do?
Adhanid chinnapilligal, shanda poddu, periyakutthama?
Is it wrong that they fought with small children?
Ana indha pillai, vandu, peranduk konjanala, resilinathkaliye, vyadi pattukkevlamai pochi.
But in a few days, that the child was born, this child was struck.
Idukka karnam thavide.
The reason for this is David.
Namudiya, petturoogalde, thavarda, pilligalai, adigamai, pathikirade.
The fault of the parents are affecting more the children.
Orukudumathala, purushunumanaviyav, adik, nallabesikumalama.
In one house, one husband and wife will never speak to each other.
Orayavilunna arkanga.
They are in one house.
Nallavasari.
They are in good.
Nallavarumana.
They have a good income.
Ah, vasadi kikoerevee gireyadu.
There's no lack of facilities.
Ana purushunuku manavikav, ahaadu.
But the husband and wife cannot face each other.
Ah, yeblovo, chulipathach.
They were told so many times.
Avalku, arangi varamudiyadu, ivanuka, arangi varamudiyadu.
And she cannot come down, neither he can come down.
Ivan vandu, konja rules, regulations la besva.
He will speak rules and regulations.
Ena, vedu, vandhakampeeniyaa, rules and regulations, beshtirukke.
Is the house, the company for speaking rules and regulations?
Orisalaru vedlalala rules.
Some of them have rules in their houses.
Ah, andh rules potta, avalku, thakupadikumudiyala.
He kept these rules and she could not stand by it.
Ah, avavu, avavu, straight forward, adu, adu, oru trackla, payitthi.
She was a straight forward person and she went another track.
Ana, renduvaru, koyilkuravanga.
Both of them will come to church.
Uliyathala, rambahelpfulana.
Were very helpful in the ministry.
Lacha kanakla, pannata, kudupa.
And give lakhs for ministry.
Ah, ande, avandu, iruthal, lachma, oru, kaanikavutthiruka.
He came and gave offering as twenty-six lakhs and so on.
Abbalavu, varumana, ullo, oru, nallab, ah, kudukumbothu, nampraa, naipakani, kudukuparam, pashtattan, cholitthu, vandruva, vedla, avalku, thiriyam.
To that extent, he was a good person and he will tell his wife that he is going to give.
Ana, renduvaru, ahaadu.
But both of them cannot face each other.
Adu vandu, nerungana, ivanuka, than thiriyam, mattham, ivanuka, thiriyavunthiriyadu.
Only to those who are close with them will know about it.
Ah, ivan, ivan vandu, parasangathamani deerevaa.
He will only keep preaching.
Ah, idhey, poratam.
The same struggle.
Karaisila.
Finally.
Kathar pillaiyathothara.
The law touched the child.
Pillaiyathotha, odanay.
When the law touched the child.
Appidiyae, renduvaru, divertstanga.
Both of them came down.
Renduvaru, saraiaidanga.
And both of them rectified.
Renduvaru, oparavaidanga.
Both of them reconciled.
Renduvaru, manipikaatachi.
Both of them asked for forgiveness.
Vedla, nalumani javan, padinijayosama, narakka, javan, thiripitharangayi.
The four o'clock praising, which did not take place for fifteen years, plays again.
Ah, tanijavon, janijavon, undu, ivan, renduvaru, taniyakadavu, putigavanga.
And both of them saying personal prayers will lock the door.
Ipavolunga, kudumajavan, narakaranshi.
Now, properly, family prayer is going on.
Ah, vedna, vedupati, amkavali, eepadamata, ipavedupati, manavi, pilligal, purithu, oru bar.
He will never bother about his house at all, but now he is burdened about his wife and child.
And addi, indharrenduvaru, saripadikicci.
That's my thing, did rectify both of them.
Adu vola.
Like this.
Namudiya, jivyathala, namu, edukka, samudri, pilligal, yen adike padukaranga.
Why are our children beaten in our lives?
Namudiya, korayak.
Because of our faults.
Andh pillai, enna paavanjindide?
What sin did that child do?
Uriyavin manavikav, paran, andh pillai, enna tapu sijide?
What did the child of, what wrong did she do?
Adukka, adukka, enna thiriyam?
What did that child know?
Paavamillaada, pilliganga.
The child knowing no sin.
Paavatthala, uruvaanadu, thavara, paavum, chiyayathiriyadu, adukka, padukkila, karaakke.
The child being formed in sin, that does not know any sin, but it's sin best.
Karanam yar.
What's the reason for that?
Indha thayi, the open.
The father and mother.
Ana, kathar, ivan, adike, thukupadama, sucha, anga, aanbannara.
But he did not allow him to be beaten, he put on the switch somewhere else.
Adu, avan, renduvaru, saripadikicci.
And that rectified both of them.
Adu vola.
Like this.
Indha thavidende, pillai, addi padik.
Here, the son of David was beaten.
Ah, karnamenna?
What was the reason?
Kathar cholraru.
The law said.
Devanu, thusikeyav, karanamayirundha.
He was the reason for this praising in the name of the law.
Yirundam Samuel, panirundam, patinale.
Second Samuel, twelve fourteen.
Anaalum, indha kariyathinali, katharudiyasathrukkal, thusikeyani, karanamayirundavadiinal, unukke, perandapillai, nichaimai, saagamintu, soli, naathan, tanveedukupayivittham.
Ebedi, chirukas, ipavulle, chirukas, thulana, onakkuradamaay, irukka, elubukara, aida, vakkadhey, pahum, odanay, alayliyavangara, anney, koolathirukas, ivan, enna, chonan, thirima, nee, pillam, banna, om pillas, sahavam, ipuddhan, chirukas, cholutthi, pahum.
Those days prophets used to prophesy like this, that you have sinned and therefore your child will die.
Appidu, oru, thirukas, ivan, nasarathala, illiye?
There's no prophet like that in Nasirat.
Ah, odanay, avanathoratiyavutthiravanga.
Immediately, they chase him off.
Neepidilam, thirukas, cholukada, sabaila, enna, neen, thirukas, chunna, kathar, sabay, nesikarara, appidu, chuliyav, avanathoratiyavutthi.
You should not prophesy like this because the Lord is loving the church and says, "Ma."
Elangaila, rettaru, oodunnu, oru, thirukas, chunna, na, kootamudinavu, elarum, vayavana, chathey, puristanga, enna, sabaila, vandu, enna, pesa, thiriyama, pesiyutthirukka.
One person prophesied in Silon, saying that the blood will pour out like waters, and they came and accused him as to what he is propheting in the church.
Odicha, odlia?
Did it run or not?
Rettaru, odicha?
Did.
Odiinadu.
It ran like the.
Anney, koolathirukas, ivan, vandu, chonna, nee, sathrukkal, thusikey, karanamayirukka, kudadu, anala, onakam, addi vudan.
That day, the prophet came and said that you have caused a great occasion for the.
Purujadigal, oh devanu, thusikey, nee, karanamayirukka, kudadu, oru, nadavadikyo, peecho, palakkolakamo, siripo, unude, edaybadhalo, yendavidavu, oru, kariyathalum, sathru, kadavul, chariilanga, yesu, chariaruna, yanga, ibidinarandichii, ivanla, ibidirukan, cholindittaa, devanu, naman, thusikey, nee, karanamayirundavadiinal, onakam, om pilligal, kadivudan.
Your walks or talks or actions should not be able to blaspheme in the name of the Lord among the Gentiles, if you should say that, why should such a thing happen, and why his walk like this, then there will be beating, your children will be struck.
Idi, addi, bhattavulukulla, purasangam, addi, baddamal, pathukakapadavendi, oru, kulla, purasangam.
This is the message for those who are beaten and those who have not been beaten, for them to be preserved.
Yes, ayam, madhala, madhikaram, anjavasanathala.
Isaiah, chapter one, verse five.
Ullu, uchu, ullangal, thodengi, uchandala, matthu, sugamee, illai.
From the head even to the foot, there's no strength, eh, thing at all.
Edukaga.
What is the reason for this?
Karanamenna?
What is the reason for this?
Ah, anale, anji, ar.
Four, five and six.
Ayu, paavumulla, jadiyum, akramasalbaran, sumandha, janamum, polathavargalin, sandhadiyum, kedu, undakku, ra, puttarumai, irkrirgal, kathre, vitte, israelin, perushutthukka, koba, mandakke, pinvanki, pannargal, innun, neengal, yen, adike padavendum, adigam, adigamai, velaki, pogirirgal, thalay, illam, vyadiyum, irudayum, illam, balachimai, irikirade, ullangal, thodengi, uchandala, matthu, madhale, sugamee, illai, adu, kayamum, veekkumum, nodikir, anamum, illadu, adu, seal, fiddukapadamalum, kattapadamalum, enne, inaal, aatchapadamalum, irikirade.
Indha, yen, innun, neengal, yen, adike padavendum.
Why should you be stricken more?
Adukka karnam, neengal, adigam, adigamai, velaki, pogirirgal.
The reason for this is you are revolting more.
Katharavutti, neengal, velaki, pookadu, finvanki, pookadu.
You should not depart from God, neither backslide.
Adukaga, prachinavara, than, cholamudiyadu.
For that you cannot see that problems will not come.
Odiyakarangala, prachinavaram, viswashigala, prachinavaram, kudumathala, prachinavaram, purujadigala, prachinavaram, pallavidangala, prachinavaram, enna, vandhalam, krissivina, anblu, nikkaran, nee, aani, addichu, vodu, nikkinam.
There will be problems which are coming through the servants of God, through their members of the family, through the people, Gentiles and through believers, but whatever might come, you should be as the person who is named.
Enne, enne, pontroon, odi, pavanam?
Should such a person as I flee?
Oru, vinvanki, pavananala, enathuma, avan mail, freeyamayiradu.
If anyone should backslide, then my soul will not be pleased in him.
Ah, ya, addi vangrara, nee, ya, velaki, pogradu, ya, uchandala, ullangal, thodengi, uchandala, matthu, onakav, vyadi.
Why are you beaten up? Why are you departing? And why is there no soundness in the soul of a person?
Pingvankital, oru, addi, ivan, namukuthu, vandu, varugara.
Backsliding will bring a smiting.
Velaki, pogudhal, namukuthu, oru, addi, ivan, vandu, varugara.
And moving away will cause a beating upon.
Andh addi, nuudiy, eh, mudivu, namukuthu, ullangal, thodengi, uchandala, matthu, vyadi.
The end of it is, there is a sickness from the soul of the foot even to the head.
Orisalaru, vyadi, orisalaru, maranam, orisalaru, kusuravum, orisalaru, illamale, payudhurakka.
Some of them have sickness, some of them have death, some of them have leprosy, some of them are not found at all.
Ah, periyammanulai, kathar, adikirunudie, ragasyamenna?
Dear beloved, what is the secret of the law?
Avan thagappan, tanudiyapilligalai, addipar.
He is the father, he will smite his children.
Naamadai, saripadikolavendi, kaalam, idu dan.
And this is the time when we have to rectify ourselves.
Naamadai, saripadikolavudiyaga, devanu, me, alaitthirukka.
The law does call this, that we might rectify ourselves.
Yes, ayam, patthi, yel, patinale, parukumbrudhu.
Isaiah fifty-seven, verse seventeen.
Anga, adike padukarunudie, innoru, karnam, cholapadikarade.
There's another reason for being beaten.
Naan, avargal, porla, sinum, akramatinimitam, kadun, koba, maki, avargal, ey, additain.
Orulasi, oru, viswashi, uliyakaranga, pohumbodu, addi vudakarade.
When a believer or servant of God is going into covetousness, they are being beaten.
Indha markathala, vanditthi, parug, olakathala, onakupurulasi, irukka, kudadu, phodhumenkara, manadurune, kudiya, devabaktiye, nirkundha, adayam.
After coming into this religion, you should not have covetousness, a sufficient heart saying that is sufficient is more gain.
Namavandigala, la, baringa, ellal, loanla, arukum.
Vehicles will be all on road.
Namavidigala, baringa, ellal, loanla, arukum.
All our houses will be on loans.
Vedla, irukka, porukala, baringa, washing machine, adu, padi, karanla, na, vodho.
All the things, even the washing machine will be in debt.
Grinder, gettinga, adhula, padi, kettirukam, padi, kattikondu, irukkara.
And if you ask for the grinder, you have paid half the amount and half you are going to pay.
Allame, loane.
Everything is on loan?
Allame, kadana.
Everything is on debt?
Allame, osi.
Everything is free?
Ah, namabidi, ah, adutha, munneri, porudhu.
How can we then progress?
Porulasi.
Covetousness.
I have not saved my brother, he is now saved and he went to a church for preaching. The day a pastor was preaching about death. When he saw me, he said. There is a pastor there in that place. How he is speaking? He is telling if you get for death, you can live and die. Good that I heard the message after I built the building, otherwise I would not have built it all. If one should hear the message, he will definitely die. If you get the death, then you are lost. Should you make covetousness to that extent? Do you want a house like that? Do you need a car like that? Do you need a two wheeler like that? He is speaking like this. If I should speak like that, how it will be? You think and see. Old messages were full of hot, but these days we are speaking decently. In James four four, we see the messages very hot. He did not say about them as believers, but he is calling them as adult heroes and adult dresses. The reason for this is the friendship of the world is enmity with God. If one is coming into Christ and loves the world, then he is an adulterer. Saying that you do not want anything in this world, then you are getting for credit cards and keeping your everything for loan, then you are not a believer. You walk and go until the Lord gives you a car. You walk it until the Lord gives you a car. Until the Lord gives you, you be in a rented house. Or if when you close the eyes, you can go to heaven. These are messages which we have heard when the saints of God have spoken, I am telling you. I told you. For one house dedication, two chief pastors have gone. He was an important believer. Four, five of his children on the ministry. So when they called the two chief pastors, went to the house. After the dedication was over. And when they were eating. One chief pastor asked him as to whether you have built this on your own or have you got any debt? And he told the truth. Maximum is my money to lack debt. And he said. Is it so? Then he said, this house will not get along, you somehow sell this house and to the money you get to get another house. How many nasid believers will say halal here to this? That is why we say the servants of God does not know the suffering of the believers. What did that believer do? The function was over three. Within that evening, he spoke the rate. And he sold that house. And paying the debt with the rest of the money, he got another house and got settled. This is the experience of unbelievers before. But now it's not so. I have filled the form for loan, you pray for this form. It manages not giving. The Holy Spirit should speak in the heart of the manager. You pray well. As soon as I go, the bank manager should sanction sanction it and you say the Lord has given and you praise God, but where the he is given, but bank manager. But here they will come and say the Lord has prepared a house for the ones who are living alone, did the Lord build it for you? You should harken properly. You should think as to why you are beaten. Because of the iniquity of covetousness, I will beat them. I wanted to take a loan, can he preach like this? Is this leading? He says that if you go to Pendi Kotsi, he will make you zero, this is right. He will make your zero out here, but there you come and see your zeros will be added. There the Lord will increase your counting. The Lord will grant us our requirements. The blessing of the Lord will add riches, he will not add sorrow to it. There are certain failures in the labor of hands. How much ever they earn, nothing is happening. No blessing at all. What's the reason? There is a reason told out here. Karukaiinallum, vishapanainallum, kalmalainallum, ungalay ungal kaygalin velaililamadithain, aanallum nengalay niddathil manazay tirupamal poneerkalintu, kathasulkirath. What's the reason for this? If you read before, you can see that in the offering, they were unclean. They were not faithful in the offerings. Nextly, defilements increased. For these two reasons, the Lord smotes the work of hand. They are earning a lot, but nothing is remaining. He is going from street to street for earning, but there is no balance. Reason for this is. In verse fourteen, you can see. And the verses before. We can see the defilement. The Lord is speaking about defilement. Verse thirteen, the Lord is speaking about uncleanness. Nextly, what he is coming and laying down is also unclean. And the offering is also unclean. Therefore, I have put out everything. When it came to the heap of twenty measures, it was only ten. The Lord should not permit the work of hand. Many of have the beating in the work of hand. Chapter one, verse six. We see that he is earning wages and is putting into the back of hope. Even though he bring it home, I will blow it upon it. Your offering should be clear. You should be faithful in your offering. There should not be defilements in your offering. And that which you have gained unworthily, you should not give offerings. In your wrong earnings, you should not pay offerings. Be very careful. One brother, he got money saying that he will get work for somebody. If anybody gives them money. He will bring firstly to faith home. He will give every fruit and offering to the church and he will pay the offerings and go. And servants of God do not know the reason why he is coming like this, but he will come grand and go. Anytime he comes, he will not come. He will not come always, but when he comes, he will carry. But therefore, he had a royal respect in church. But finally, what happened? One day, he came suddenly with the police. They caught hold of him. And he said that he will get a job here and there and finally he got caught. When the ten o'clock preaching was on, he came with the police. When he was asked to give the money. He pointed to the pastor. And they inquired him outside. He said that I thought he gave only offering. See how it will be? He gave the tithe of what he cheated the others and he brought the offering and the fruits to church. The offering of the holy tree and the wages of the dog should not be come to the church. Another father of the son of God. I heard that he got and he was lending money. That he got for interest. And I said, you are a believer, you are next to the faith home, I got such a report about you. Then he said. I got, he asked money for me and I gave him. But he will not give back. Only if I say that he should pay the interest, he will clearly give back. Then I asked. Then he said, yes, I am getting it until the money comes and get. Then I said, it's wrong for you to get. He said that I have not kept even ten parts of that interest. So what did you do, I said? Last week, I gave you thousand five hundred. Finally, he put me there. You just think and see how it is. The techniques of our people is like lending arms to the people. As the people in the world are giving the money to some other gods and just going off, our people are very clear to give that offering of that interest to me and he is going. Finally, saying the Lord is smitten, why the Lord not smite? You should be very clear in your offerings, you should not take undefiled, defiled things to as offerings and pay and be smitten. Finally. My God, chapter six. Of verses ten to thirteen. Why is the lot beating? You should understand the right reason as to why the Lord is smiting until death. Some of them will not know the reason why they are smitten, today you should know the reason why the Lord is smiting you. Chapter six, verses ten to thirteen. In the adi naala ulla result, you know, weakness. The reason for this beating is weakness. He is making you weak. The reason for this is. That is erroneous things. When you see verses before, you can see this. And there is. He is speaking lies. And full of deceit. And they are cheating. And earning because of violence. And storing up with that riches. That is why you are being beaten. What is the sin said out here? It is earning the things without violence. The reason for this is weakness. How many of you have gotten beaten like this? Our people should understand as to why the Lord is smiting you. The Lord is saying. Because of my wrath, I have smitten you. That day, the child of David died. Uzzah died. Herod died. Some of them have been made sick. Some of them lost the blessings. Some of them became weak. What I say? We are not beaten and died. The Lord has kept us graciously by the dispense of fire. And Herod was beaten and died. The child was smitten and she died. Like this. We many of them have been smitten in this religion and have died, the Lord by his grace given us small chastisement and he has kept us. One was the saying. I have smitten you, but I have chastened you little. The Lord did chasten him. But saying that he is his child, how he did he chasten? If the elder children did beat up the small children, then they will catch up the elder children and they just beat up a little way and like this, the Lord does beat them up. I will cut a break full of end of all the nations which has happened. But I will correct thee in measure and will not leave thee altogether unfinished. In the process of the model, we will not be beaten, because the Lord is loving us, we have not been punished totally, but we have been put down with weakness and some failures in our lives, but if we should rectify ourselves with this message, then we can be without punishment. I was beaten as the oxen which will never become big custom to yoke, but you turn me and I shall be turned. In Hosea six one, we can see that he is wounded and he will bind up a wound. According to Isaiah sixty ten, that he is beaten in his rock, but by grace will he have mercy upon us. All of them who are will be beaten by the law and who won't say the law that you rectify myself and I won't rectify my life, you should kneel down now. I understand the way that I am beaten. That I might not be smitten, the Lord has taught me. I understood as to what I should do and what will happen. I humble myself to the words of the Lord. To many sisters, to many wives, I used to say as to why you behave that you might be beaten like. Why did he beat you? She will say that I resisted and I spoke, why should you speak or resist that you might be beaten? Is there anybody who is beaten, then you turn back to the law? Again, I repeat. We are all beaten, but we will not be beaten, but we will not be beaten, because the Lord is loving us, we are not beaten. Many of them have been smitten and have gone, but by God, the Lord by his grace, he is chastened as to only a little extent and by his grace, he is preserved this. Hereafter, by force, I will not do anything. Hereafter, I will bear the ministry given to me. Hereafter, I will not give room to pride at all. Hereafter, I will not intergene a transgression. I will not live a life perverse where the enemies will be blasphemying. In any situation, I will not go away from your love. I don't want anything in this world, I have no desire in anything, but my desire towards you. Hereafter, my offerings will be pure. Hereafter, my offering will be truthful. I have been beaten up with the work of my hands and I am going on to poverty and in this, you stop with it and I will rectify myself. Lord, forgive my sins. Because of your weddings, there are many weaknesses in me. Lord, have mercy on me. I was like a bullock which is not a custom to yoke, you rectify myself. You are the one who beat me, you heal me. It is you who beat me, you have mercy upon me. When the father beats, the mother will come and embrace. If the mother herself beats, she will come and embrace herself. The Lord says in my wrath, I smelt it in my favor, will have mercy on thee. How many of you will ask of the Lord like this? Lord, lead me into life not being smitten. Because of the smiting upon me, I became faint. You bind up my wounds. All of you kneel down and ask the Lord to bind up your wounds and the Lord will have mercy upon you. Amen. Aye, I beat thee, I beat thee, aye, I beat you, because I don't know the reason, 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 because I don't know the reason. Shidabala ka shidabala, shidibika baka, shidabaniya. If you are punished, you will not survive. Your pains, your diseases, your diseases, your diseases, you will be punished. You will be punished. You will be punished. If you ask my brothers and sisters, why you are being punished? Shidabala ka shidabala, shidibika baka, shidabaniya. Amen. Shidabala ka shidabala, shidibika baka, shidabaniya. You will be punished, I will be saved. My children, my family will be saved. If you ask my brothers and sisters, why you are being punished? If you ask my brothers and sisters, why you are being punished? You will be punished. I will punish you. I will cut my pains. I will honor you. I will not be punished. I will not do anything from now on. I will die. Shidabala ka shidabala, shidabala, shidabaniya. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. One of your brothers died. Hallelujah. We have heard about your actions. Now, when you die, you will be punished. Amen. My pains are very much... They are the reason that I am loved. I do not abandon you. I do not allow you to hate me. I keep you in my pocket. That is why I am the one who is punished. I have many pains. But I will keep you safe. I will keep you safe. Amen, hallelujah. If you ask my brothers and sisters, why you are being punished? My children, you will be punished. My family, you will be punished. You will be punished. Your pains, your diseases, you will be punished. Shidabala ka shidabala, shidabaniya. Amen, 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 amen. Shidabala ka shidabala, shidabaniya. Amen. I have understood your pains. I have not understood your pains. I have been punished. I have been punished. I have done something wrong. I have been punished. No matter how, in this day and time, let my pains be punished. From now on, I will be punished. I will be punished. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Shidabala ka shidabala, shidabaniya. (Singing) The sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. The rain is falling on the land. I am singing. The sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. The rain is falling on the land. I am singing. Hallelujah. If you ask my brothers and sisters, why you are being punished? My family, my brothers and sisters, 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 I have been punished. But if you are punished, you will be punished. You will be punished. He was punished. He was punished. (Singing) The sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. The rain is falling on the land. I am singing. The sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. The rain is falling on the land. I am singing. When you ask my brothers and sisters, why you are being punished? Let your family be punished. Hallelujah. The sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. The rain is falling on the land. I am singing. This is the words. The sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. The rain is falling on the land. I am singing. You ask my brothers and sisters, why you are being punished? Let your family be punished. Let your family be punished. That is wrong. You have been punished. (Singing) The sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. The rain is falling on the land. I am singing. The sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. The rain is falling on the land. I am singing. Oh, the sun is shining in the forest. The rain is falling on the land. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. Oh, shidabala ka shidabaniya. You will be punished. You will be punished. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. You will be punished. You will be punished. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. Hallelujah, ramina, habina baka, shidabaniya. Oh God, isham tudi biddi kara, shidabaniya. Amen, amen, amen. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. Amen, amen, amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, 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 amen. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. Amen. I have understood your pains. I have understood your pains. I will be punished. I will be punished. But I will be punished. Amen, hallelujah. How do you feel? There are no days when you are punished. There are no days when you are punished. There are no days when you are punished. Hallelujah, amen, amen. Shidabala, shidabaniya. Shidabaniya, shadu la mania, raba. Amen. A local servant was sitting in a church. He went to work. He went to work. He went to work. But he was caught. He asked his wife. He asked his wife. He said, "My wife." 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 I will be punished. I will be punished. When you are punished, you will go away. You will go away. You will go away. You will go away. Ishala, baha, liya, bala, shidabaniya. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. Shidabala ka shidabaniya. Amen. Are you a believer in this? Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Our lives are in the hands of some of your causes. Let us pray. Our lives are in the hands of some of your causes. Why you are being punished? What is the reason? Let us pray. But I will be punished. Let us pray. There are no days when you are punished. Let us pray. Let us pray. Let us pray. Let us pray.